Well, welcome everyone. My name is Corey Passons. I'm the program manager for Interfaith Relations with Interfaith Works.
And I am Brian Watts. I am one of the shelters that one, one of the managers at the shelter Interfaith Works.
Interfaith Works is a local social justice organization based here in Olympia. We are a coalition of thirty plus diverse faith communities and affiliated organizations. We're also the region's largest social service provider to vulnerable adults experiencing homelessness. We want to affirm that Interfaith Works does not endorse any candidate running for these offices or for any candidates running for elected offices.
We're grateful for the candidate candidates present here today. Thank you all for showing up. Allow me to introduce them in the seats for which they are running. We have Corey Gunney, City Council, position number six. Dante Payne, City Council, position number six. Clark Gilman, City Council, position number four. Spence Wine, Wine, Wine Gun, City Council, position number seven. I apologize for chopping your name up. And Jim Cooper, City Council, position number seven.
Thank you for being here. We offer this space and time as a place for you, the candidates, to share your platform and ideas on how to make our community a better place. We appreciate you very much and want to thank you for being here to focus on the issues that are important to our community.
Each question will be stated and then the candidates will respond in rotating sequence. We ask that each response be no more than two minutes in length and we will hold up a sign when you have twenty seconds left. Our first question. Why are you running for City Council and what are your goals if you are elected, Corey?
Thank you for the opportunity to answer this question. Thanks for inviting me here. I'm Corey Guy, running for Olympia City Council, seat six. Why I'm running for Olympia City Council, I returned home ten years ago. I've seen the direction of the city as far as community safety, homelessness, addiction, mental health, and affordable housing in our community continue to get worse. And I understand that some of these are externalities, influences from Seattle, Portland markets, housing markets, things of that nature. There and and we're attracting people. It was two years ago when my uncle was out walking his dog up on Evergreen Park Loop and was assaulted and beat unconscious by a homeless man. That was the catalyst for me to get involved more with city politics and what is going on in our community as we continue to see increased rates of violence, vandalism in our community. That combined with the the current, the lack of leadership on our council last year, when there was violence downtown, there was a political stance taken to justify one group's violence and denounce another group's violence rather than taking a principled stance and denouncing activities, all of these activities together. I had twenty-two years military experience, three years work in state government, a project management certification, masters in business administration, state business and economics. So I've led and mentored folks throughout my military career and been led by diverse groups of folks. I lived nineteen years overseas. I've seen the world, have experienced not being part of the dominant culture. So I can use empathy to understand. I want to bring empathy and compassion and accountability to the table, not apathy. I want to find solutions to problems, have smart objectives, specific, measurable, attainable, and timely that we can reiterate back out to the public where we are, what's going on, rather than saying, no, we've done what we can. We're going to double down and continue on our current path. As a project manager and with a lean six sigma certification, we can always improve. We continue to improve. That has been my life. That's what I've continued to do as a public servant throughout my entire career. Those are skills and abilities that I want to bring to the table as a city council member.
Thank you. Jim?
Try again. Thank you. I'm Jim Cooper. I'm running for position seven. Thank you so much to Interfaith Works for having us. It's important during this pandemic when we're having a lot of trouble reaching out to the voters individually to to have these forums. So please keep doing them. So I'm, I, you know, I just want to start out by saying I'm running because I have a ten-year-old daughter and it's all about her future and the future for her kids and grandkids. And I'm really proud of our council for continuing to be a data-driven, people-focused organization. And and we are looking for new and better ways to do that every single day. You know, obviously, this job is not easy. It's not glamorous. In fact, we are governing under five emergencies. We have a housing emergency, an opiate emergency, a pandemic emergency, a climate emergency, and the economic emergency that ties them all together. You're seeing that very present in the work of Interfaith Works in our, in your services in our community. You know, for me, all of those things are about inequity. It's what I've always been about. Before the pandemic, a third of our households were struggling to pay their bills in Olympia every single month. If you're a single-parent, female-headed household, that's three-quarters or more, seventy-seven percent of those households, and half of our black and Hispanic households are struggling to get by every single month. That's nine to ten thousand households before the pandemic, really not able to make it. So in the coming years, I'm going to focus on a recovery that's equitable for all, all people. Housing and childcare are the largest costs, so we're going to continue to keep building as much housing as we can of every single type. In fact, Olympia is on track to single-handedly achieve the countywide goal of three hundred permanent supportive housing units by 2024. So the Regional Housing Council, which I chair, is going to add one hundred and fifty units to that goal. We have to implement our climate plan, continue to make strides and then find, you know, make sure that our climate and our housing work are equitable for our lowest-income neighbors. It's it's really important that we don't pass that that bill on to them. So thanks for having me.
Thank you. Dante?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm Dante Payne, candidate for Olympia City Council, position six. I moved to Olympia due to my service in the U.S. Army. I served in the Army for six years and deployed twice to Afghanistan. And after my second tour, I moved here to Washington and separated from the Army in 2016. I attended school at the Evergreen State College and received a Bachelor of Arts degree. And I also have a Master of Public Administration degree from the Evergreen State College as well. And in that time, I served as a regional representative to Governor Inslee. And currently, I now work as a district congressional staffer to Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland. And I have been able to create a very, a very wonderful life for me and my family here in Olympia. We dropped our anchor here because we saw that Olympia was just full of community and had so much character and we just felt that it was a wonderful place. And so we decided that we were going to stay here. And, you know, I think that that is a story that's not all that uncommon. In fact, I think many people probably share that same story. But I think now, coming forward and running for office, this is about giving back to Olympia, giving back to this community who's done so much for me and my family. And I think that we have an opportunity to talk about some very important issues. When I was on the East Coast many years ago, I had never seen such a visible homelessness before. I imagine that it's probably gotten significantly worse for them as well, because I do believe that homelessness is a national crisis. But I have to say, it was something that was very shocking to me and it was sort of the the first thing that really initiated this for me. And so I feel a sense of moral obligation and responsibility to do something about giving back to this community and giving back to the people who are in it. And so that's what I intend to do if I'm elected to the city council. And thanks for having me.
Thank you. Spence?
Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you, Interfaith Works, for having me here. I am a fourth-generation Olympian who moved back to Olympia twenty-five years ago to raise my family. And I now have three wonderful kids and a great wife. I'm a graduate of Whitman College in Walla Walla, Washington, but I've been a local realtor here for twenty-five years. I would like to announce that I'm trying to get seat number seven for Olympia City Council because I care about the city and I think we're headed the wrong direction. I'm going to apologize in advance today that I am really under the weather, suffering from fog rain a little bit, and there will probably be no attempts to need to wave a sign at me today because it's going to be brief and terse. In any event, I will be focusing on creating more affordable housing for the city of Olympia, trying to address the root causes of homelessness that not only plague our city but our country, and to embrace and encourage the vitality of downtown small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clark?
Thank you, Brian. My name's Clark Gilman and I'm running to retain my seat on Olympia City Council. I came to Olympia at eighteen years old, a kid who grew up in Bierion, and I only did one year of Evergreen at that time. It took me ten more years of working as a carpenter, doing a bit and a bit to get the degree. But I fell in love with the West Side neighborhood and that's where we've lived our life and raised our kids and where we still live. My experience for the last ten years, I've been involved in the city of Olympia first as a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, then Chair of that committee, and then as a city council person. So I bring that experience. And I also bring a perspective that's that's a little bit unique in the crowd of city government folks. And that is a working-class person who is not a policy professional, professional and doesn't have any advanced degrees or anything like that. So I, I think that's valuable. In terms of goals, I feel strongly that we need to stay the course on our one community plan for homelessness response. We need to stay the course on our racial justice and equity work. We need to accelerate our climate response. And while we're doing all this, these multiple crises, we need to save room for continuing to enhance the parks, old arts and culture efforts that we have going for fixing potholes, making sure the water is good, all that, that essential business of the city. So I'm Clark Gilman. I'm really proud to be part of this forum today. And I just want to recognize Spence saying that he's feeling poorly today, but he showed up. That's what I see universally across the people involved in all of the regional, local governments is just decent, normal people showing up and doing what they can. And I just, I appreciate that, being here today while you feel poorly. Thank you.
Thank you. Homelessness is a central concern and crisis in our community. A recent plan related to homelessness involves a proposed site for people living in cars and RVs that would relocate those vehicles parked on Enson Road to Martin Way and Carpenter Road. Would you please comment on this proposal and how it is related to a wider plan for homelessness that you would endorse? Jim, would you like to start?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is something that's coming from the county. They're taking the lead and I'm really excited about it, you know, the, you know, not necessarily a planned piece, but really growth of a population that is interfering with our hospitals' access by emergency medical services. And so the the plan is to move about twenty folks, most vulnerable, probably senior citizens, to the side out on Carpenter Road, shuffle the population down, away from the emergency exit to the hospital and entrance to the hospital. And then the county and the city are working on buying another piece of property to move the whole population to a little bit longer-term temporary site that will also have the ability to build a building or two that are permanent supportive or affordable housing in the future. You know, the plan that we have is to keep mitigating the Band-Aid approach that we have while we build more units. We're fourteen thousand units behind. We have an economic issue with people struggling to pay their bills and literally even with all of the COVID enhancements, people in falling out of their homes because of the pandemic. You know, there's tons of federal money and people are still losing their houses, even with eviction moratoriums. You know, it's easy to sell your property or transfer it to another LLC and evict someone. And so we have to keep doing, building in every, in every income strata while we look at really growing the number of permanent supportive housing units so that we can move people out of camps and into permanent housing. I'm really excited that this, in about, in about a month or two, the new Interfaith Works project will open and you'll have a new, brand-new, the first built-for-service shelter in the Thurston County ever, and you'll have, you'll bring on two shelters within a couple of weeks of each other. Those projects and the next phase of that project and the Family Support Center project will continue, will, will, will really help. And I think that we'll start to see some changes on, on the streets with our street-dependent folks as we have more of those units online. So thank you.
Thank you. Dante?
Yes, thank you, Corey, for the question. So the scattered site plan, I believe, is a plan that is, we need to respond to what is happening on Enson Road. It is interfering with operations for the medical facilities. And I think that this is something that is in line with what I would support in terms of my own ideas when it comes to homelessness response. I think that we need to have more transitional shelter for our homelessness, homeless individuals. And so the scattered site plan, I believe currently they're sort of deliberating over how many that will accommodate. I've heard numbers such as twenty RVs, particularly for seniors. But for me, I think we need, we need to have a conversation on a much larger accommodation. I think that we have folks not just on Enson Road, but around the city that could benefit from this opportunity. And this is meant to be temporary, right? And this is very important to identify. Transitional shelter is about making sure that we are doing our due diligence as a city and as a government to respond to people's needs in the moment. And we do this by providing that transitional shelter. And while we're doing so, there is an opportunity for us to continue to advocate and provide funding towards permanent supportive housing, which is something I believe is necessary. We need to create a pipeline for people to get out of homelessness. And so this means we are moving folks from temporary shelter or mitigation sites into something more stable and permanent. And so for me, this is something that I support. I do think that we will see more in this regard. And I do think there is an opportunity for us to really see some substantial change and progress on the front, particularly if we address this regionally. So thanks.
Thank you. Clark?
Thanks, Corey. Enson Road has been really challenging and tough, both for the residents living in vehicles and campers along the road, for emergency services folks coming and going, and really for all of us to witness up close the the poverty and the unmet needs. Many of the people I've met at Enson Road are recently unhoused. And and I've also found them to be with a pretty positive outlook on things. I think it's a reasonable response if there's no place you can qualify to rent to get some cash together and get a beat or to live in. I, I just, I, I think that was a reasonable response those folks made. And we have no other place to offer them right now, right? So I'm glad we're, we're moving the most vulnerable to a new site that the county is providing. And I'm also glad that the, the Hospital Foundation is going to help provide services to this and we're going to clear the entrance to the emergency room. But really, the issue is that we have no business judging or assuming what's going on in those folks' lives. If somebody says they're hungry, you got to treat them like they're hungry. If somebody says they don't have a place to sleep, they don't have a place to sleep. We start from there. And I, so I'm glad we're moving forward, but I know we have a long ways to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Spence?
I think the relocation of the campers to the Carpenter Road property is a good start, but it's simply not enough. And we need something that, as others have mentioned, on a much larger scale. It is a good thing to move the current location and mitigate it as much as possible. Ideally, I think it's going to take a piece of property outside the city limits, someplace in Thurston County that would accommodate the entire RV population in our community. And I would like to think that that is the way we are thinking as a city, not someplace within the city. A bigger issue to me is the moving of the mitigation site on Franklin Street over to Plum Street and the neighborhood implications that's going to have in our community. I have gotten several contact points from members of the St. Michael's community that are really concerned about this. And I think there has to be more discussions about this. Anyway, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Yes, thank you, Corey. So I want to point out that four times before Olympia has implemented transitional housing and four times before that has turned into pot, full-time housing for folks. So I, I, I want to make sure that when we implement plans, we follow through with them for their intended consequence. If they become permanent housing and they were intended to be transitional housing, then our program failed in some fashion or another to transition folks out. And I am all for helping people out. I'm also for moving that, the campers to a site over on Carpenter Road. I believe that, yes, we need to have barriers in those. Lacy has set something up. They've had two people take them up on it. You can come camp, have your septic pumped, but what you can't do is have drugs. You can't be dealing, you can't be human trafficking, you can't be, and I'm not casting judgment. I'm just asking people that want to come to the community and take part in our community to abide by social norms, mores, and standards in our community. I believe the role of government is to remove barriers so that we can provide this. The role of nonprofit organizations and NGOs, such as Interfaith Works and faith-based organizations, is to fill those needs and the Union Gospel mission, as well as the Food Bank, to provide those resources. So I want to be very careful that we maintain our role of government, not as the supplier of these services, but as removing barriers and understanding what the barriers are so that we can serve members of our community. I want to welcome everybody to our community who wants to be a member of our community. That means giving back to our community. I give back through several different ways and volunteering. I volunteered for Capital High School Parents Oregon, I volunteered for the Crisis Clinic. I currently am a Rotary member. So these are the ways we give back to our community. I'm running for city council. So I mean, we're, we're concerned, we care. I just philosophically have a different approach on how we would go about that. Furthermore, like Spence, I have heard several concerns from constituents, potential constituents, I'm not elected, but about the move, moving of the downtown site over to Franklin, within five hundred feet of a school. And if this is a no-barrier site, what do we allow in no-barrier sites? We really need to think this through about what we're permitting to be close to our schools. Lastly, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Question number three. Many consider homelessness and affordable housing as interrelated challenges. Please describe how you understand the relationship between homelessness and affordable housing, and please name your goals and methods for expanding affordable housing in our region and city. Dante?
Yes, so affordable housing is something that I believe we need more of in our community in the city of Olympia. And it is something that I think plays a role in terms of homelessness. I think the lack of affordable housing certainly creates challenges for people to be able to afford a place to live. And I do believe that it is one of the, one of several reasons that contributes to the homelessness crisis, the lack of affordable housing that is. And I believe that, as I spoke earlier of the pipeline, that in order to move people out of homelessness and to not have sort of this revolving door of people who are sort of maybe temporarily getting services and remaining homeless is we need to have an affordable market. And when I say affordable, I mean, folks are spending less than thirty percent of their income on housing so that it's actually attainable and accessible to them. If there isn't anything for them there on the market, then they're not able to actually come out of homelessness. And so I do believe that is the role of our city government to provide that. And this is an opportunity for us to recognize that we will continue to see an unfortunate, unfortunate set of homeless, you know, individuals continuing to come into our community or folks who are already here, who end up homeless. And I would like to point out the fact that the 2019 Point in Time Census has designated that majority of the homeless population in this area is from Thurston County. And so that means we have a responsibility to provide this housing. These are our residents. And so I think that affordable housing is necessary. It is a necessary solution to ending the homelessness crisis as we know it.
Thank you. Clark?
Yes. Homelessness and affordable housing are certainly interrelated challenges. But I, I, I really believe that the issue is a choice that our broader society, that the United States has made to stack the decks against poor people with rents that are too high and wages that are too low. That to actually establish in, you know, to have economists talk about this is an acceptable rate of unemployment. This is an acceptable rate of houselessness. This is an acceptable rate of people on the street. That's, that's cold. That's, that's cold. So that's what we're starting with, is it's not something we're going to solve or cure here in this community. We're trying to respond both compassionately to the individuals who are impacted and also to respond to, to keep the most livable city where we can all enjoy moving around. My, my, my strong feeling about our efforts is that we need to focus the city money and the staff efforts, really specifically on investments that benefit the many rather than the few, the many who are cost burdened for housing. Examples are trying to stabilize existing apartment complexes, first-time homeowner programs. I, I don't believe that helping foster just more housing in general will do anything to reduce the, the burden of the cost of housing on folks. In fact, I think it'll have the opposite effect of gentrifying, especially downtown close and having the service workers who serve downtown have to commute in from farther out. So I, I hope that we'll continue to seek vision and efficiencies and opportunities within our building department to make it more streamlined for housing, but I don't think we should make investments in trying to, to help create that housing. Thanks.
Thank you. Spence?
I'm going to jump to the back end of that question and talk about some of the things I'd like to see happen to make building in Olympia an easier process. Number one, I'd like to consider rezoning current commercial zoning areas to residential and then allow ground for units, which will increase our housing stock as well. We do need to streamline the permitting process, and I would suggest we can do that with oversight by a citizens committee. I had a cup of coffee with Meg and she told me how her eyes were opened with the permitting process to get the building on Martin Way up and going. And so I know that she's well aware of those issues. I think we need to make it easier on our homeowners to build accessory dwelling units on their property and then largely consider eliminating or reducing impact these in our city, a barrier to building, and these are always passed on to the end user. Make no mistake that we need to build up and out and near current transit areas so people can enjoy services downtown and get to their jobs. And we would like to be able to wean our reliance on single vehicular traffic and fossil fuel usage. The lack of affordable housing is the single biggest and most unfair inequity of all in our city. That being said, the relationship between homelessness and affordable housing, I think the current population of the homeless is grossly underestimated as it doesn't include people who are forced to couch surf or massive bunking up episodes. There is a difference between becoming unhoused while in Olympia and coming to Olympia unhoused. And part of the discussion we need to have as a community is, how do we stop this ever burgeoning population from continuing to grow? I would propose that we look at the home fund tax, which I supported both by ballot and by voice, and double it. And then look to repurpose a large And then look to repurpose a large proportion of those funds to rental assistance to keeping people housed that are currently housed. Until we can increase our housing stock units so that supply finally outstrips demand, we are going to be facing this issue. We need to take a harder look at supporting the working poor.
Thank you. I apologize about that. I thought I was on mute. And Corey.
Yes, thanks. Thank you for the question. Um, I, I just want to make sure I understood. You're asking me, what is the connection between affordable housing and homelessness? And then what I would do as policy, uh, to address that.
Yes, yes.
All right. Um, there is absolutely a distinct link between, uh, homelessness and affordable housing. As, as everybody here knows, uh, the standard definition for affordable housing is, uh, housing expenses more than 30% of your take-home pay. I think we can all agree upon that. Philosophically, I think we may differ on how, how we get there. Uh, one of the things I think we do is we attract jobs. We need to attract jobs to our, with a, to our community, better paying jobs. Uh, that will help with some of the affordable housing. We need to increase supply of housing. We need to look at what barriers are to developing and building in our community, those being permit fees, those being permit times. When, when somebody comes in and submits a proposal for development and it takes a year and a half of diet, tying up that capital. That is a deterrent as a community for us to compete for the resources of investors and developers to build the resources that we need in our community. Uh, going back at, we also need to look at impact, all the barriers. I'm not saying any of these are bad. But the truth of the matter is every barrier we put into place, every permit, everything that we tie as a cost to building housing increases the cost of that housing. They're great things. Our impact fees go for parks, go for sidewalks, go for, uh, our green spaces, our schools, uh, our, um, permit fees, our, um, green spaces. They take up space, but those cost money. That money, that cost, that opportunity cost for those capital investments are passed on to our consumers in our communities. We need to take a realistic look at what all those are. Recently I got a survey asking me how I feel about our city forests and creating a permit system that 20-inch trees. I'm, you know, 20-inch trees would be heritage trees that you can't cut down. You need a permit for anything six inches or more. Organizations looking at these, and I say, that's an additional cost. We're going to be passing on to people in housing. So how do we keep those costs down in housing so that we can pass this cost savings on to our, um, to the people who are, uh, struggling with affordable housing? And when people aren't, aren't unable to meet those needs and when there's additional barriers, first month's rent, last month's rent. This is where transitional housing comes in, uh, that, that perpetuates a system of homelessness, uh, for folks when we have additional barriers like this. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim.
Thank you. As has been demonstrated by all the people before me, this is a super complex question. Um, you know, I think the thing that I'll say first is how my, my, my largest disappointment in 10 years on being on the city council is that every time we need to cite either poor people or homeless people in near anywhere anyone lives or works, there's immediate obstruction. Every single neighborhood in Olympia is dealing with the housing crisis and the homelessness crisis at the same time. I'm hearing it at the doors and what people aren't talking about is how big the inflation of cost of housing and cost of goods is to Clark's point with zero change in wage. And so if you are on disability and you make $1,200 a month, you can afford $300 in housing. And that you've lost 25% of that capacity in one year, just because of the change of the cost of housing. The city of Olympia will have to continue to find ways to subsidize those people who need permanent support, who need care and services for their whole life. You know, and to, to Spence's point, it's, it's, it's under, it's under, undercounted. The count is double. And we know it. That's been proven and shown by, by research across the country. So we have about a thousand people that need permanent supportive housing now. We have some of them in shelter, some of them in camps, some of them in unsanctioned camps, some of them on couches. I know people that have their family members that are in those places on a couch. Or I have a friend right now who's a senior citizen on disability or on social security who can't get, can't leave the hospital because there's no house for him to go to and he can afford five or $600 a month. And you know, it's, it's, it's a horrible situation and it's growing and it's growing to a point. I mean, I hate to be, you know, Debbie Downer here, but there's nothing that, that's in the city of Olympia's control right now to fix this problem. And it's going to, you know, it's a giant tidal wave coming at us without some significant state or federal intervention. Even the talk about catching up on units is really going to make it tough for people who live in, who work in downtown to live in downtown. And so the city can do things in the next level up, like our, our first, uh, um, workforce housing project that we're working on in the downtown. And continue to do things like that to fill in around the edges, you know, but, you know, if you've looked at your grocery bill, your Lowe's or Home Depot bill or Ace Hardware bill, you know, you know, looked at the rental market right now. Uh, the homelessness problem is going to grow and it's going to grow significantly. And we aren't talking about the, the, the size of that conversation as a community right now.
Thank you.
The Squawson Island Tribal Council recently signed a memorandum of understanding with the city of Olympia. And the Squawson Tribal flag was raised at this signing and will now be a permanent part of the flag display over City Hall of Olympia. Please describe the importance of this MOU and the role that you would like regional tribes to play in the ongoing stewardship of these lands. Spence?
This is of course a late-breaking development, and so I haven't given much thought to how I want the relationship between the city and the Squawsons to foster going forward. I am really pleased with the establishment of the MOU as it properly reflects and documents our history and the importance of our relationship. If elected, I will want to make sure any actions are not just perfunctory ones. I support strong government-to-government relations and would hope that the city of Olympia will also dedicate itself to building stronger working relations with other municipalities. Lastly, I've been a very vocal supporter of one of the challengers for city council, Robbie Kessler, who is Native American. Perhaps the single most significant gesture to recognize this new symbiotic relationship would to give Native Americans a voice in our council.
Thank you. Corey.
Yes, I absolutely think it is important that we as a city recognize our partnerships with, uh, our surrounding communities and recognizing the nation, uh, the native nation that is the Squawson tribe as well as, uh, our partners within the Squali tribe. As long as the American flag is held highest and we abide by proper customs and courtesies and pay respect to the American flag, I am all for it. Absolutely. Uh, I believe that we can do, we need to reach out. It's a great start in reaching out and building relationships with, uh, uh, those nation tribes within our community. Uh, we need to hear them. We need to understand their concerns. The, and recognize the impacts that we have in our policies on the lands, the waters that, that their native tribes have, uh, have lived with for centuries and decades. So I am all for it. And I, I would echo Spence that we, we have an opportunity in our community to, to elect a Squawson tribe member to our city council. And I, I absolutely support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
Thank you. This was the most historic moment in Olympia history in a long time, at least in the decade that I've served. The first accord was signed about 10 weeks prior to me joining the city council, uh, and developed by former Mayor Ma. From that relationship, we have continued to build our tribal relationships that, you know, weren't really that good for quite a while. And, and mostly because we didn't focus on them. And so about 10, maybe even 15 years of, of real focus and the first moment of, um, the first historic moment for me in that recent history was a couple of years ago when we transferred the McAllister Springs, uh, uh, water source, uh, back to the Nisqually tribe. And to me, that's the kind of thing that we would need to do to make this relationship real and make it more than symbolic. We've been meeting quarterly with the tribe and I would say the big project that we're all working on right now is that we agree that we need to restore the mouth of the Schutze River, restore the fishing runs and, and make that estuary a, a new and, and vital piece of our culture and our economy and our relationship with the tribe. We're doing other things like looking at names. What should the name of Priest Point Park be? Because it had a name before white people came here and named it. And so we continue to, to, to find new and, and exciting ways to partner. We're, we have economic development conversations about what we can support the tribe and, and develop with the tribe. The Nisqually tribe is building a, an opioid treatment facility right in the city of Olympia. It's a huge investment with no local, with no local funding that I know of. And, and that's the kind of partnership that we need as, as we continue to see what kind of investments our tribal partners want to make in our community. You know, the, the, the land acknowledgement that hangs in city hall, there's one at Percival Landing, right on the beach where, where we all share the land. And I think that's the lesson for the community in this is the land is not ours. We are part of the land and the land is part of us. And that's not how we govern. That's not how we budget. And that's not how we set policy, but we certainly can't undo development rights, uh, and move in a, in a backward direction either. The tribe wants us to continue to protect our environment and do what government is for. The interface between the built environment and the, and the natural environment. So I, I think there's going to be some awesome things coming and, and I really appreciate this question.
Thank you. Dante.
Yes, uh, thank you for the question, Corey. Uh, I had the pleasure of attending, uh, the event, uh, last week to raise the Squawson Island flag over City Hall, and it was a wonderful occasion. Uh, I'm, I fully support this. I think it's long overdue. Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, uh, the Squawson Island flag is the American flag. Uh, they are the original inhabitants of this land. Uh, it is their land. Uh, and so I'm happy to see that we have, uh, recognized this as a local government, uh, by, uh, permanently displaying the flag over City Hall. Uh, and you know, I would say that the accord or the memorandum of understanding, uh, highlights some very important things that I think, uh, going forward is going to be important, uh, for our government-to-government relationship. And that includes opportu- economic development opportunities, working together. Uh, what does the Squawson Island tribe have to say about our proposals? Uh, looking at, uh, arts and culture, there is an opportunity to make sure that representation of the Squawson Island tribe is there, uh, that it is present. When you visit the city of Olympia, you should know whose land you are on. Uh, and I think that's very important. Um, and I'll just say this, uh, you know, the founding, you know, of the city of Olympia, 1859. And here we are in 2021 and we have just recognized, uh, this. Uh, and it's important to also recognize that, uh, if I'm elected, I would be the first black male to serve on the Olympia City Council in its city's history. Uh, and so for me, I, when I look at that flag, although that is not my identity, I see that we are making progress and that we're moving forward and recognizing that, uh, we are better together when we tell the truth about who we are as a people. Thank you.
Thank you. Clark.
Thanks. The, the, um, renewed accord between the Squawson Nation and the city of Olympia is, is a great symbolic strengthening of this relationship. Um, and, and I was really pleased, we, we were inspired by the Evergreen State College deciding to fly the Squawson try, the, the Squawson Tribal flag. And several of us attended that event. Um, and we did, to, to the question asked a moment ago, we did work with a flag protocol person to decide which two flags should be stacked and to make sure that the hierarchy is appropriate there. So that the flag etiquette was, was cared for. Um, and I'm really proud that there's a beautiful engraved, simple land recognition plaque that now hangs at the entrance to the council chambers. I, I think there's two ways that the city benefits from this relationship. One is, is of course this long, long view on stewardship of the land and resources. And, and that's really come through the tribe's advocacy around West Bay and the Deschutes Estuary. And then the other one is, is economic development right now. They've got some casino dough that they have the possibility of investing and starting more businesses. Um, and it's been exciting to begin talks about how the Squawson people might have a presence in downtown Olympia. So I'm, I'm very pleased and proud about the, the event and about the relationship, uh, moving forward.
Thank you.
Question number six. Anything else in closing that you'd like our audience to know about you and your plans for what you would bring to this position? Clark.
Yes, I think the, the one thing I would say is you can count on me to ask for more for the many. That, uh, I'll do that for sure and I'll work hard to kick the doors open a little wider and hold the city hall doors open. So that we might have more participation, more involvement from historically marginalized communities, from black, indigenous, people of color. And, and working class people to try to get some seats on those boards and commissions and a voice that's heard in the executive offices at City Hall. It's been my honor to serve on city council and, um, and I really appreciate the Interfaith Works forum today. Thank you.
Thank you. Spence.
Yes, thank you. I am hoping, uh, if elected, that I will bring a common business sense approach to running the city. I want to thank you guys for, uh, offering this forum this afternoon and providing my oldest son with a job. He works in Interfaith Works and you guys do great work in our community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Corey.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, thanks Interfaith Works again, uh, for what you do in the community and thanks for hosting us here. Uh, I hope that this is just the beginning, uh, among the candidates and whoever's elected in discussions and philosophical differences. I, I certainly, uh, plan to do that if elected, listening to wide groups of people, groups from, um, our progressives, liberals, moderates, conservatives, everybody in our community, black, white, indigenous, LGBTQ community members. We all have different voices and we all know, we all practically know that you can't please everybody all the time. Uh, the approaches we need to take are ones that are principled, that are equitable and that provide opportunities and access to our government for everybody that is in our community, regardless of income level, regardless of identity. That's what I would bring to the table. I did that 22 years through my military career as a firefighter. Uh, we work with people all socioeconomic levels, all backgrounds, all colors, all, uh, religious beliefs. And I think that's what, that's why I came back home to Olympia, because it is the open, tolerant, accepting place. Uh, out of all my experiences living overseas, this is a, a, a unique place, not just in its social environment, but also in its natural beauty. And we need to work with our nation tribes to address those challenges in our community. You can find out more about me at, uh, www.coryforcouncil.org. Or you can email me at cory@coryforcouncil.org. And again, thank you, everybody for participating. I look forward to more robust conversations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim.
Yeah, I'll just echo the thanks to Interfaith Works. I really appreciate you doing this and, and getting it out. Um, you know, it's important that more people run for office. I mean, honestly, the coolest thing about this year was how many candidates we had coming into the primary. That's been my, my goal, uh, you know, since I was a little kid. You know, we have to have more people and more different types of people in our leadership. And I, I just happen to be one who was in the right place at the right time and want to continue to serve my community. I thank Olympia for the trust they put in me. Uh, obviously these questions and what we're facing are super complex. And even when you're doing the job, it's hard to answer them in a short, concise, um, answer. And, and so, uh, I, I'll just ask people also to go to my website, electjimcooper.com to find out more. Uh, I'm honored to be supported by organized labor and environmental groups alike and, uh, appreciate your vote on November 2nd. Thanks a lot for doing this.
Thank you. And Dante.
And feel better, Spence. Sorry about that, Dante.
Oh, it's all right. Yes, we want you to feel better, Spence. Um, so first of all, thank you to Interfaith, uh, for having us, Interfaith Works for having us today. Uh, you asked some very important questions, uh, and, and a relief to get some. You asked some very important questions and, and a relief to get some questions that are a little different and very important questions to ask. I will just say that not only do I have a professional experience, I have a lived experience with many of the issues that I'm talking about. When I talk about affordable housing, I am not talking about this from something that I have studied or looked into, although I've certainly done those things. I'm talking about I have lived in government subsidized housing. I know what it's like. I know what it's like to walk the streets and to not feel safe for not only from people who are just simply walking the streets, but also from the institutions that are there to protect us. I know what it's like to feel that. I know what it's like to feel like you don't have enough money to be able to be environmentally responsible and to do your part to change your behavior in addressing climate change. All of these things are very important, I think, to consider as you are, as an elected official, to use that personal experience as a motivator to really change things and make them better for the people who live here. And that's what I intend to do if I'm elected to the Olympia City Council. If you want to know more about my candidacy, I encourage you to visit my website, Dante, D-O-N-T-A-E, the number four, Olympia.com. And thanks again for having me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we got everyone on that last question. Well, thank you to our candidates today for joining us. Corey Gani is running for city council position number six, Dante Payne, running for city council position number six. Clark Gilman, running for city council position number four. Spence Wagon, running for city council position number seven, and Jim Cooper, running for city council position number seven.
And to those of you watching, thank you for being with us today. You can stay in touch with us through our website at interfaiththeworks.org and follow us on YouTube and Facebook as well.
Thanks to our candidates again for all of you joining us and have a great day.